Paul, would you lead us, please?
Aye, pleasure, ladies and gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and a justice for all. We thank you. Blaze.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The first item on the agenda, the Planning Department recommends the following items for adjournment, as we have insufficient information to act upon them. Part one, item one, number 2011-01, All Seasons Motor Lodge. Item two, number 2011-10, Anthony Luteri. Item three, number 2009-05, FP4 Realty. Item four, number 2012-02, Carlson Associates. Item five, number 773 Scholar Estates. Item seven, 280A Application of Olivia Estates. Item eight, the Letter of Interpretation for the Polish National Church. Part two, item nine, number 2010-06, KVC Holdings. Item ten, number 1053A, Berg Estates. Item eleven, number 911A, Glen Hill Northern. Mr. Chairman, these are the items the Planning Department recommends for adjournment.
Thank you. Is there anybody here who wants to speak on those items to be adjourned? Adjourned items? Okay. Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the items read.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Mr. Chairman, we'll now move on to part three of the agenda. Item 12, number 889B, Jason Estates. Mr. Chairman, this application was brought before the board at the last Planning Board meeting on June 6th, at which time it was adjourned for an onsite inspection by the board. I believe all of the members have completed their onsite inspection, and the applicant is back for a decision from the board. We do have a resolution if the board wishes us to read it.
Any questions from the board? None? Okay, read the resolution.
Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby makes a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals to permit altering environmentally sensitive land with slopes in excess of 15% to permit a structure within 10 feet of environmentally sensitive land, to reduce the minimum lot area for lot number two from 21,780 square feet, 44,653 square feet is proposed, to 7,909 square feet, and to increase the maximum floor area ratio from 25% to 44.3% due to environmentally sensitive land for a proposed 3,500 square foot home. Mr. Chairman, this is the Planning Department's recommendation for Jason Estates, number 889B.
Anyone here representing the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Vincent Trumarko. I represent the applicant. I heard the recommendation of the Planning Department that it will be sent over to the Board of Appeals, and we concur with that. Thank you.
Anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this application? Hearing none or motion?
In the matter of the final map of Jason Estates, number 889B, motion to adopt the resolution as read as recommended by the Planning Department.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under part three, item 13, number 1092, Winston's Run at Nescotet. Mr. Chairman, this application was brought before the board at the May 16th Planning Board meeting, at which time it was adjourned pending an onsite inspection by the board. I understand that all of the board members have completed their onsite inspection. The applicant has returned requesting a decision by the board, and we do have a resolution if the board wishes us to read it.
Did they accept there the proposal of the resolution?
Yes, they did.
All right. Read the... Any questions by the board? Read the resolution.
Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby denies the request of Winston's Run at Nescotet LLC to waive the requirement of installing 146 linear feet of sidewalks on the west side of Old Nichols Road within the subdivision known as Winston's Run at Nescotet, number 1092. The board will accept a payment in lieu of constructing the sidewalks in the amount of $1,423.50 to be used for future sidewalk construction in this area by the Highway Department. And be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves the request of Winston's Run at Nescotet LLC to waive the installation of 750 linear feet of sidewalks on Dara Court within the subdivision known as Winston's Run at Nescotet, number 1092.
Anyone here representing the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Vincent Trumarko. I represent... Well, I'm sitting in for Mr. Weinrebb, who's celebrating his 57th birthday. I heard the resolution, and I understand he's in agreement with it. Thank you.
Anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this? A motion?
In the matter of Winston's Run at Nescotet LLC, number 1092, motion to adopt the resolution as read.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under part three, that should read item 14, number 1066, Greenbelt Estates. The applicant requests to extend the performance bond for a period of two years to end on May 9th, 2014, in order, excuse me, to obtain more time to complete construction and all necessary improvements. The applicant received conditional final approval for this six-lot subdivision from the Planning Board on December 21st, 2005. A performance bond estimate in the amount of $156,383 was approved by the board and subsequently signed by the chairman. The applicant submitted the bond monies and all related materials to the town, and the town board accepted a performance bond on May 9th, 2006. Planning Board approval for this performance bond expired on May 9th, 2012. The applicant submitted a bond extension application to the Planning Department on May 25th, at which time the application was distributed to all departments concerned for review. The engineering, highway, and traffic safety departments have no objection to the performance bond extension request, and have determined that the bond amount is sufficient to cover all remaining improvements. Planning has performed an onsite inspection of the subdivision and determined that all required public improvements have been completed. Additionally, four homes have been completed, and the applicant will begin construction on the remaining two homes. The performance bond will remain active until construction of the homes is complete to safeguard against damage to the existing public improvements. Therefore, the Planning Department has no objection to the applicant's request. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves a retroactive extension of the performance bond for the subdivision known as Greenbelt Estates, number 1066, for a period of two years to expire on May 9th, 2014. Mr. Chairman, that is the Planning Department's recommendation for Greenbelt Estates, number 1066.
Is there anyone here representing the applicant? Would you give your name and address, please?
I'm Victor Murray. I live in Bethpage, 39 Cedar Avenue. I'm one of the principals of the corporation. M-U-R-R-A-Y.
You understand there the resolution?
Yes, I do.
Okay. You accept the resolution?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this? Hearing none or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion in regards to Greenbelt Estates, number 1066, that we adopt the resolution as read.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under part three, that should read item 15, number 1086, Nottingham Acres. Mr. Chairman and board members, and ladies and gentlemen in the audience, I just want to make everyone aware that this next application is not for the change of zone. This is for an extension of preliminary approval. The applicant is requesting two six-month or one-year extension of the conditional preliminary approval in order to obtain more time to comply with the requirements of filing for final approval. The preliminary map of Nottingham Acres, number 1086, received approval from the Planning Board on June 15th, 2005. The board extended preliminary approval for this subdivision on July 6th, 2011, through December 15th, 2011, with the condition that the applicant submit a final subdivision application to the Planning Department. A copy of that memorandum is attached. The applicant submitted a draft final map to Planning on November 23rd of 2011, showing the subdivision being constructed in four sections. The map was distributed to all town departments concerned for review. The applicant submitted an extension request on December 9th of 2011, because the previous extension would expire on December 15th. Since comments had not been received from the other town departments, Planning did not schedule the applicant's request before the board. Comments have recently been received from all departments, and the applicant can now submit the final application. Therefore, Planning has no objection to the applicant's request. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby grants a retroactive extension of time to the conditional preliminary approval for the subdivision known as map of Nottingham Acres, number 1086, from December 15th, 2011, to end on December 15th, 2012. Mr. Chairman, this is the Planning Department's recommendation for Nottingham Acres, number 1086.
Is there anyone here representing the applicant? Would you give his name and address, please?
Frank A. Tantone, Tantone and Gallata, 2459 Ocean Avenue, Ronkonkoma, New York. We have heard the proposed resolution. My client is fully consenting and respectfully asked and joining in the application.
All right. You heard, Blaze, what this was about. This is not there for the zoning application. This is strictly for a map that had been approved and hadn't been worked on, and now it's... He can go ahead with a map there for the approval. But it was a map that was approved back in 2005. Okay? All right. Anybody that wishes to talk on this in the audience? A motion?
In the matter of Nottingham Estates, number 1086, I have moved that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under part three, that should read item 16, I believe, number 2012-04, Storybook Homes. There are zoning maps and aerials attached to the back of your memorandum. The Planning Board will conduct a public hearing this evening, June 20th, 2012, to consider the above referenced petition for a change of zone from Professional Business and R15 Residential Single Family 15,000 square feet to RMGA Garden Apartment District in order to develop the subject property into 66 residential apartment units. The site is a 5.34 acre parcel at fronts on Lake Avenue. There is an existing residence on the site, and the balance of the property is wooded and undeveloped. The terrain is flat throughout the parcel. The applicant is requesting a change of zone from PB and R15 to garden apartments to permit development of a 66-unit garden apartment complex, each unit to be approximately 750 square feet in size. This is a request to amend the comprehensive plan. The subject site was zoned for single-family homes and business uses at the inception of zoning in 1932. The business portion was extended in 1947 under petition number 1947-06, and was later changed to the Professional Business designation in 1987 by the Town Board's own motion. The site is currently mostly vacant with a house in the northern portion of the lot. To the east is property zoned R15. It is vacant and has preliminary approval for a 48-unit single-family subdivision known as Nottingham Acres, number 1086. To the north is property zoned R15, with a vacant portion, a part of Nottingham Acres, adjacent to the subject site, and single-family homes further north. Across Lake Avenue are single-family homes in R15 and PB zoning, a fire station, and a retail nursery. To the south are residences in PB and R15 zoning. There are several issues for the board's consideration. The board should consider whether there is a need in the community for the type of units proposed, whether this is an appropriate location for such a complex, what potential impacts, both positive and negative, there may be from development of the proposed units as compared to the current zoning, including impacts on traffic, character of the neighborhood, and school age population, and how those impacts might be mitigated. Finally, the board should be aware that this development is subject to the provisions of the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. The board may want to consider several factors in assessing the need for the proposed zoning. This proposal is for the construction of small units, approximately 750 square feet in size, an appropriate size to meet the needs of single people of all ages and young married couples, or others without school-aged children. There are three apartment complexes in Nescotet, with a fourth that has been converted to co-ops, but none have been constructed in the past two decades. Recent census data, however, indicates that there has been an increase in the number of childless households in the town in that period, with 50% of all current households being childless. Because single-family houses and multi-bedroom condominium units have been the prevalent forms of new housing in this region for some time, housing construction has not kept pace with the changes in demographics. In recent years, the Planning Department has recommended the construction of smaller one- and two-bedroom units, with the expectation that such units will meet these needs, and that the small size will keep the price of the units affordable relative to the market as a whole. The board should consider how a complex might fit into the overall housing stock of the town. The board may want to consider whether the location of the site is appropriate for such development, particularly in reference to smart growth standards. Smart growth initiatives seek to locate housing near transportation and shopping to make residential communities more energy efficient and more economically sustainable on the dual assumptions that people shop where they live, and that walkable communities are more energy efficient and more inviting. The subject site is approximately 1,000 feet from Smithtown Boulevard, and walking distance, under a half mile, from the intersection with Nichols Road, an area that has recently developed into a neighborhood center. There is a bus route along Nichols Road that connects to many other Suffolk County-wide routes at the Smithhaven Mall, and there are restaurants and a coffee shop in the area. The board will want to consider whether proximity to the business center of Nescotet contributes to making this an appropriate location for such a complex. The board may want to consider traffic issues at the subject site, including traffic generation and circulation issues. The subject property is located along a secondary arterial, Lake Avenue, that is currently carrying about 6,000 trips per day and operating through most of its length at A or B level service. It is unlikely that this proposed complex would alter that pattern based on other development in the area. For example, at the almost 600-unit Galleria development with one access point on Terry Road and one on New York State Route 347, there has been no appreciable increase in traffic generation and no significant circulation problems on Terry Road. While professional business or single-family home development will result in less traffic generation from the site, the proposed housing complex, at about 10th the size of the Galleria, is unlikely to change the level of service. Further, the petitioner has built another small complex in the town, Enchanted Manor on Smithtown Boulevard, west of the Nescotet Library, that is screened from the roadway and has been well-maintained. Appropriate landscaping and buffers, a single access point for vehicles, and a building design in keeping with the character of the area can be effective in helping a new complex blend into the, excuse me, existing neighborhood. The board may wish to include Enchanted Manor in its onsite inspection of the subject site. The board should be aware of the likely impacts on the schools of the proposed complex. Studies done locally on Long Island and elsewhere in the country have shown that the impact of new housing... Bless you. ...on the school age population is related more to the size of the units than to the type of housing. Apartment complexes with one- or two-bedroom units produce fewer school-aged children. If the project is limited in unit size, it will have a tax-positive effect on the schools. Finally, this complex would be subject to the Long Island Workforce Housing Act, a state law that went into effect January 1st of 2009. This law requires that new residential developments in Nassau and Suffolk Counties be granted a density bonus of 10% to be used to provide housing for people making up to 130% of the median income. For this complex, that would be an additional seven units to be made available to one-person households with income up to $97,850, or two-person households with income up to $111,800. The petitioner and the Planning Department will develop a proposal to implement this requirement prior to any site plan approval for the project. The petitioner has submitted a revised radius map that corrects an error in the listing of the Suffolk County tax map, excuse me, lot number, for one of the surrounding properties. The petitioner included the lot in question in the mailed notifications and submitted the revised map to assure that the file contains the correct information. The Planning Department recommends that this property be the subject of an onsite inspection by the board. The following response has been received from the Suffolk County Planning Commission. Pursuant to the requirements of Sections A-14 through 23 of the Suffolk County Administrative Code, the above referenced application, which has been submitted to the Suffolk County Planning Commission, is considered to be a matter for local determination as there is no apparent significant countywide or intercommunity impacts. A decision of local determination should not be construed as either an approval or disapproval.
Thank you. Is there anyone here representing the applicant? Give your name and address, please.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman. Frank A. Tantone, Tantone and Gallata, 2459 Ocean Avenue, Ronkonkoma, New York, on behalf of the applicant, Storybook Homes, Inc. May I proceed?
Go ahead.
Good evening, Planning Board members. Mr. Chairman, we're here tonight on an application which is being submitted, as you have heard, by Storybook Homes. The application seeks to change a parcel from a combined zoning of Professional Business and Residence 15 to RMGA, which would permit garden apartments. I have with me tonight, and we have some multiple displays which we would be happy to put up, we're here to conduct a public hearing and to divulge as much information about the project as we possibly can, in the hopes that folks will be more comfortable and know what's coming into your neighborhood. With me tonight, I have Mr. Al Hornberger, hopefully coming into your neighborhood. Let me correct myself with permission of the board. I have with me tonight Al Hornberger, who is a principal in Storybook Homes. John Minto is the surveyor and who developed the site plan on the project. Patrick Rock is the architect, and Peter Brown of Mulryan Engineering is here, having done a traffic study. For the sake of brevity, I will only call upon these gentlemen if we have questions for them, or if they need to clarify a point for either the board or for any of the residents who are here this evening. The property, as has been mentioned, is located on the east side of Lake Avenue. It's approximately 100... Well, it is exactly 100 feet north of Pearson Street in the Hamlet of St. James. The parcel is mostly vacant. It's approximately 5.34 acres, which has one old house on it. It is located in the Nescotet Fire District, the Smithtown School District, and is serviced by the Nescotet Post Office. The property will be serviced by Suffolk County Water Authority. The mostly vacant parcel, as you have heard, is flat and does not seem to present any significant drainage issues. Subject property is bounded on the north by R15 zoning, on the east by the larger single-family development, which you may have heard of, which was on just before this application, which is also R15 zoning. It's bounded on the south by Professional Business, and on the west by Lake Avenue. Across Lake Avenue, directly from this project, the zoning is Professional Business also, with mostly residential-type structures, but the zoning does permit Professional Business use. Lake Avenue, as you all know, is a north-south roadway which feeds basically up into Route 347, which is primarily the bulk of the traffic heading to and from 347. Applicant is proposing to build 66 one-bedroom apartments, resulting in a density of approximately 12 units per acre. The proposal would result in a gross floor area of 25%. The 66 units would be distributed amongst five buildings of eight units apiece, a building with 12 units, and a building with 14 units. The buildings will basically be two-story buildings. We have architectural renderings of them, so you can see what they look like. They're hopefully of a character that will be acceptable to the board and to the residents. They will be built in a one-over-one fashion, meaning a typical eight-unit building would have four on the bottom and four over the top. The units themselves will be one-bedroom units, as you have already heard. That is significant in this applicant... In this application. As you've already also heard, the units will all be uniformly 775 square feet. As I said, each unit consists of one bedroom, one bath, a kitchen, and a living room/dining room area. The units are tailored for young adults and single or recently married people. Due to the size of the units and there being only one bedroom, it is not anticipated that the project will generate any significant burden to the school district, if any at all. The anticipated rent on these units, for everyone's edification, is $1,200 a month. It is hoped that this will be able to allow or permit some of the younger folks who are having difficulty finding housing. I myself am the parent of a 22-year-old and trying to figure out where he's going to go soon. The $1,200 a month is a representative amount for a single family... For a single-bedroom unit, and hopefully it will allow our younger people to stay here in the great town of Smithtown or some of the neighboring towns. It is anticipated that once a young married couple outgrows this unit, they would then move up to change, so to speak, and perhaps buy one of the houses that is in the neighboring area. The proposed project does fill a need, in the opinion of many people, including the applicant, for this type of housing. Many towns are at a loss sometimes to find a diversity of housing stock. We tend on Long Island to build and want single-family homes. I myself, as many of you, do live in a single-family home, and that is the predominant type of dwelling here on Long Island. Recent studies, as has been indicated by the Planning Department, though, have told us that we need to diversify the housing stock a little bit. We need to create some different types of housing to permit our younger folks to be able to afford to stay with us here on Long Island. And hopefully that this project will fill that need. I have with me tonight, and I have a copy for the board, a study which was done by the Long Island Housing Partnership on multifamily housing on Long Island. It was compiled by Dr. Pearl Kramer, who is an eminent economist in the area. And the study, and I won't go into a great deal of detail, does cite the lack of this type of housing as being a major factor in keeping our 22- to 40-year-olds here on Long Island. The study then goes on to conclude that this is what they call the proverbial, or you may have heard the term "brain drain," where many of our younger folks in their late or mid-20s are leaving college, they're looking for jobs, they have these talents, and unfortunately they're not able to stay on Long Island because of the expensive nature of living here. The study then goes on to cite that from the year 2000 to 2008, we have had an 18% drop-off of residents from the age group of 25 to 40. And it is directly, according to this study, attributable to the fact of the lack of diversity of housing stock, and that this particular group in particular has difficulty finding housing that they can afford. The same study concludes that the failure to build multifamily housing units such as this one is based on a mistaken belief that this type of development generates an undue burden on the school district. I have copies of the study. I'd be happy to provide them to anybody who'd like to see it. The study then goes on to say that this mistaken belief is actually blatantly incorrect. The study concludes, and has a great deal of numerical data in it, but I'll save you the boredom of listening to all the numbers, but one of the things I'd like to point out, and I think is important, is that in Suffolk County, multifamily dwellings like this typically generate 0.17 children per housing unit. In the town of Smithtown, it's even better than that. I think you heard some comment about other multifamily dwellings. Town of Smithtown, the statistics show that developments like this generate 0.12, which is even less, children per household. Just for the sake of comparison, the study cites that in compiling the number of single-family homes and children in school districts, your typical single-family house generates 0.58, which is about a half a kid per house. All right? So that, based on those statistics, the study concludes that developments such as this are actually less burdensome on the school district because... as this are actually less burdensome on the school district, because they do add to the tax revenue without putting a burden on the school districts by adding additional children. The study then goes on to say that Suffolk County has 186 multifamily housing complexes such as this. 111 of those complexes, or 60% of them, actually generate a tax-positive situation, meaning that more taxes are collected than are spent on the people who live in those particular units. That's countywide. The statistics, actually in Smithtown, are significantly even better than that. In the town of Smithtown, there are 19, according to the study, there are 19 multifamily housing complexes. 18 of them generate a positive cash flow as far as tax revenue, meaning that they collect more taxes than are siphoned out of the system. And significantly, that's because of the lack of schoolchildren that are put into the district. And that's really what the study bases its information and its conclusions on. Just to give you a little bit more, you know, one other number that you might find interesting is that out of the 19 complexes here in the town of Smithtown, there are 2,210 housing units, and according to the study and the statistics that were compiled there, in those 2,210 units, 261 children are generated into the school system. So just a little bit of quick math, that means that each child in the school district in Smithtown comes out of approximately eight-and-a-half units. So every eight-and-a-half units will generate one child in the school district, which is significantly less than what a single-family home would do. The applicant also has a proven track record in this regard. I think you heard a little bit of testimony and a little bit of information that he has also built a similar complex on Smithtown Boulevard. That development is approximately 15 years old. It has 47 units, and to date has not had one child enter the school district. Lastly, I'm sorry, not lastly, the applicant also has, and I have copies, and we will submit it, has asked the Smithtown assessor to give us an idea of what the tax revenue that would be generated from this project would be. I have that here in writing from the assessor. I'll submit it to the board, so it'll be part of the record. But again, it's going to support that assertion that the complex will actually generate more tax revenue than it will use, and that's another very big point on why we think this is a good application. One of the other things that we also want to touch upon is traffic. Traffic is always a concern to Long Islanders. We live in a very automobile-oriented community. This particular development, we have taken, or the developer has taken significant steps to try to mitigate any potential traffic problems. This particular property, as you may know, is approximately 750 feet of frontage on Lake Avenue. If built out to capacity, that could be as many as seven to 10 curb cuts, which, as we all know, would be a disaster in that area. So what this development actually does is, and yes, it does have more people on the property, we do understand that, but what it does is, as you can see up here on the site plan, there is one way in and then another driveway that is in and out. All traffic will enter and exit off of Lake Avenue, will be self-contained on the property, will not bleed back into the residential areas that exist behind the property. And as you may or may not have come to realize, behind the property is this significant 47-home development, which is single-family homes that Storybook Homes is also putting up. That particular community is also going to be relatively self-contained, and we have done the best that we can to mitigate the traffic flow and try to direct the traffic back out to the main arteries and then back out into the surrounding areas. On the site, I think we should just talk briefly. There are 99 parking spaces. That translates into one-and-a-half spaces per unit. Now, keep in mind the basic principle on this development. They are one-bedroom units, which would typically house either a single person or a married couple without children. 99 units statistically, 99 parking spaces statistically would be more than enough for 66 units. Obviously, a single person in a one-bedroom unit would generally only have one automobile. A married couple who both work would typically have two, and that's where you get one-and-a-half. All right, and I think statistics would show that that should be a sufficient amount of parking. The applicant plans to develop the adjacent parcel, as you've already heard, with single-family residences. This particular development would be a nice transition, in the applicant's opinion, and hopefully the board will share that opinion. The business property would then transition into this multifamily development, which would then transition back into the single-family homes. It wouldn't have that stark contrast of business butting right up against single-family residential development. So we hope that that will be another mitigating factor, should the board choose to approve this application. In conclusion, and we'd like to hear the comments of the neighbors, the need to keep younger residents and to create housing and a diversification of housing stock has become critical. We do need to provide our, as the study shows, our 25- to 40-year-olds, who are saving up to buy a house, or some folks who just honestly cannot afford a house, we do need to have a logical place for them to live. We feel that a development like this will provide that. That combined with the fact that we do believe, and the statistics show, that this will be a tax-positive development, meaning it will generate more than it spends, we feel very strongly that this is a very appropriate development. I know that developments of this size are somewhat imposing when first looked upon, but if you want to come up and take a look, when you do come up at the way this thing is laid out, there are significant vegetation buffers throughout the whole development. At any given point, there's at least 50 to 60 feet worth of trees and vegetation, which should provide proper screening for both Lake Avenue and some of the surrounding areas. So we've done our best to try to beautify and keep as much green as we possibly can, so that it would be as non-intrusive into your neighborhood as possible. We're open to suggestions. The builder is done building here in Smithtown for many, many years. He's not somebody who's looking to just come in and then cut and run. He lives in the community. He works in the community. He's done very well in this community and intends to really stay in this community. So in summation, we'd love to hear your comments. Hopefully, the exchange of ideas will lead to a project that we could all be happy with, and respectfully, we'd ask that the board grant the application.
Thank you. Do you have any, anybody that wants to explain the project there besides yourself there?
You know, maybe I'll have Mr. Minto, he's here. I'll have the surveyor come up and give a brief presentation on the site plan.
Okay. Good evening, board members. John Minto, I live at 331 Old Mill Road in St. James. Yeah, this project, which everybody's familiar with, is on the east side of Lake Avenue. It's a little over five acres, and more importantly, it's a portion of the overall Nottingham acres. So the thinking in here is to create this apartment complex in the vacant land, and then, as we develop the rest of the property, the people that are moving in will be privy to the fact that the garden apartments are there, and understand the density, and understand the need for the housing in the community. I think if we had the other map out... I think the aerial helps a lot. You can get to see the southwest portion of the overall Nottingham acres, and this is the, highlighted in yellow, is the five, over-five-acre parcel that's a subject of the change of zone. And as you can see, almost 80%, 90% of this property is surrounded by vacant land, so moving in, you'll know what kind of use is there, what kind of zoning. Not like, you know, an application to put multifamily against existing residential houses that exist. So there's 1,000-feet buffer of woods till you get to the next contiguous household. Also, on the southeast portion of the subject five acres, is the Suffolk County Water Authority property, which is wooded as well, and that acts as another buffer between the property.
Excuse me. Just wait till he gets finished the presentation, and then you can ask him the questions there, and we don't get interrupted, okay?
Yeah, I think once you look at the configuration, the location of the property, and of course, I'm here to answer any questions about the layout of the future road network and the buildings itself, I'd be more than happy to explain the relationship. Thank you.
Why don't you stay there for a minute? There was a question there about the Suffolk County Water Authority, the gentleman there. Now, what we do is, we want you to come to the microphone, give your name and address. I understand there's a lot of comments that want to be made. We know who, so we know who you are, and it's all recorded there for the benefit there of whoever has to review this.
There's a lot of people here you might want to figure out in order to do this.
There's a lot of people that want to...
Oh, yes, we're here all night.
This is a project, so you might want to figure out...
You can, yes, you can, you'll definitely there, be able, everybody that wants to talk will have their opportunity. I just hope that you try to be not repetitive. If somebody says something, it doesn't really do any more than just repeat it. It helps there to be able there to hear everybody then.
My name is Mike Vogell, I live at Three Maiden Lane in Nescunset. My question was, you're talking about the water area, and that's right there. I was trying to... ...acclimate where it belonged, and I understand that you're going to have regular houses in this area?
Yes, that's what, that's what the zoning is for that area, yes.
Right. And the garden apartments are going to be in here?
The parcel that's in yellow is the one that's for the zone change. That's the outline for the zone change.
Well, the next question I have is, what is it going to do to my property value?
What does it do what?
What is it going to do to my property value?
Well, I... We all understand what you're here for. The thing is to try to get these questions asked without interrupting the speaker, all right? Go ahead. I have no idea, because this is an application that's just come before us, and it'll have to be determined there as we go along, what people feel there is going to happen to their property values.
You're going to take this area, drop a garden apartment in there, and it's not going to affect our property values?
Well...
A lot of us moved out here to get away from garden apartments. We came from garden apartments. We don't want to look at garden apartments. Also, would you like that garden apartment dropped across the street from you?
I understand.
Not answering, are you?
What? Well, I don't, I don't, it's not going to happen to me.
Right, but it's going to happen to me, and it's going to happen to them. Well, I've had my say.
Thank you. Okay, now, now let's see if we can have a little bit of order here. How many people want to speak tonight? All of you? Okay. Then let's start there, over here to the right, and we'll go to the left, and take one at a time until we've done the whole room. Gentlemen, here, give your name and address, and what your objections are, or whether you're approving it or not.
Yeah, my name is Jim Bartnek. I'm the president of Nescunset Taxpayers Association, and my address is 50 Sun Hill Road in Nescunset. So this property is zoned residential, single-family. It's zoned residential, single-family for a reason, because the people in this room came here expecting a certain type of neighborhood that they're living in, okay? This is going to have a negative impact on their property. It's going to have a negative impact on their quality of living. It's going to, actually, it may help young people get cheaper housing, but not in a way that's been recommended, but because their housing prices will go down, and they'll become cheaper, so people will be able to come in. But I'm sitting here listening to this, and I hear this thing, and I've heard it over and over again, about affordable housing and high-density housing and all that, and they talk about putting it in downtowns. And I just want to be clear, because I, you know, I'm not real good with spin, and I apologize for being blunt, but the real issue here is that the builder wants to make money, they want to build an annuity, and it's a way for him to make money, and that's fine. He has every right to make money. He does not have right to make money at the expense of people who have put most of their life savings into their houses, and are going to see their quality of life and their housing values go down, and potentially impacting their retirement and a lot of other things. It's just not a right thing to do. It's a not-right thing at all to do. Now, also, you mentioned the, you mentioned the Water Authority just to the south of that. I would like to understand, has there been a study done as to how the increased density will impact that?
To my knowledge, in other words, the application is just being started here now for rezoning, and all of those things will be undertaken there...
Okay, because I would...
...in the event that it is approved. That, it's not guaranteed that it's going to be approved there, because it has to go to the town board for any kind of a change of zone. All we can do here tonight is listen to everybody's comments and understand why you want or don't want the application to go forward, okay?
Okay. I also, you mentioned the traffic along Smithtown Boulevard. You mentioned also the fact that in the corner of Nichols Road, a lot of things have been built up. I'm sure all of you have gone through there during rush hour in the morning and the afternoon. It is horrendous. And I got to tell you, a lot of these people, you put 100, whatever it is, 100 extra cars there, some of them are going to go up to 347, a lot of them are going to go down south to Nichols Road to the expressway, on Lake Avenue, on Smithtown Boulevard, and down to either Southern Boulevard or one of those roads. Traffic is going to be much, much worse than what it is. Furthermore, you're putting housing in there with a $750, 50-square-foot room, $1,200 a month. It's going to invite a transient population, people moving in and out. It's going to be all sorts of different people that don't care. They're rentals. They don't care about the town like these folks care about their houses and their property, right? They just don't. It doesn't belong there. I'm going to go back to the point where this is zoned residential, single-family for a reason. It's right smack in the middle of residential, single-family neighborhood that people paid a lot of money to stay. It does not belong there. And also, by the way, I have a question. Are the parking lots going to be illuminated?
Can we hear the question, please?
Are the parking lots going to be illuminated?
I would imagine the town code would necessitate that they are, and it would be downshielded appropriately, so that it's not affecting everyone else's, you know, comfort. So, yes.
Okay. Again, that was my point. I just request that you look closely at the people who live around there, and what it's going to do to them, take them to the expense of enriching one. Thank you.
You're welcome. Your name and address, please.
Lebrun, 11 Pearson Street, Nescunset. Why is there so much concern about where young people live? Why is that a concern at all? Who cares where they live? They live wherever they want, don't they? Why do we have to build for them? Why are we catering to them?
This is not a question of catering to somebody. This is a question of an applicant that owns property, that wants it rezoned, and that's what he's proposing, is this plan. It doesn't, it conforms to the planning director's, their recommendations from the standpoint that it can be done if somebody wants, if the town board wants to change the zone, but only on those circumstances.
Yeah, he said he had a 22-year-old. Perhaps the 22-year-old wants to rent one of these apartments. I have two children. They live at home. They didn't go look for apartments to rent, and I would have really been upset if they wanted to leave just a few yards away from home. I mean, it doesn't make sense at all. I mean, why are we catering like that?
It's not a question of catering. It's a question there that the landowner has the right to make an application. That's what we're here for tonight, is to listen to what the community wants to say. But they have a right to make the application, and then a decision will be made by us on one way or another. But until we hear everybody's comments, we don't know what people want to have done.
I would have preferred that this gentleman said, "It's for senior citizens. It's for middle-aged people. I have nothing against young people. I have two of them of my own." But why is he making a huge deal about giving affordable homes to young people? I mean, it seems like I'm going to sell you this, and I'll put a lot of makeup on it first.
Well, maybe. Well, maybe, maybe he's excluded old people for no reason. In other words, when somebody goes to rent an apartment, he, the age, you can't discriminate against them, so that...
That's exactly what I thought.
All right.
But there was a huge emphasis on that.
I don't think he tried to exclude anybody, all right? But I, but I understand what, what you're saying there. It's, it's something there that we want to listen to the comments, to get everybody's comments, and then we can make a decision, okay?
Well, okay, but make the right one.
Mr. Chairman, just to, to be clear, there, this is not an age-restricted development in any way. Seniors, middle-aged folks, whoever, would be more than welcome. And I, I believe I did say 25- to 40-year-olds, I didn't say 22-year-olds. I wouldn't want to live next to the animal house either. I understand, I saw the movie. But the bottom line is, I think, the point of emphasis is not that we're trying to cater to this group, but we're trying to provide homes, and they typically fall into the income level because they're just starting out, husband and wife. And that, that's all that, that's all I meant by that. There is clearly no age restrictions. I just want to be clear for everybody.
May I just...
Wait a minute, no, please.
No, okay.
We'll take one at a time, and, and you can say, have everything you want to say. If you want to come back again and say something, you'll, you'll be welcome.
My name is Scott McLean. I live on 31 Lancaster Avenue in Nescotet, and if I may show you where that is. We have to figure out what this is, okay? We can dress it up, but she said it better than I could possibly say it. Lot of makeup, okay? This is market-driven housing right now. Had this been eight years ago, the $800,000 homes that were originally planned in this development would have been going forward. Guess what? I bet you 90% of the people wouldn't be here tonight. This is not good. We just closed Nescotet Elementary. You can do all the studies you want. You just closed one elementary school in Nescotet. John, what's the, what's the name of the next one?
Tacktown?
I only have a son in high school. I'm telling you, this is, it's a detriment to everybody here, and it's profit-driven. That's what it is. I'm sorry, let's call a spade a spade, that's what that is. And I, I for one are completely against it.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Hi, Mario Waterzone, 28 Lancaster Avenue. Waterzone, A-R-D-I-Z-Z-O-N-E. My wife and I live right on the corner here of Lancaster and Pearson, and I've been in the house for 32 years. My parents bought the house, I bought the house from them. We bought a house in a residential area away from apartments. We don't think that a transient population of one or two-bedroom houses with young families moving in will bring much to the community. They're going to move in, they're going to live a year, or two years, and then they're going to leave the community. And it's not going to bring somebody who's going to have a vested interest in making the community a better place. They're going to want to come in, live, make some money, save some money, and move out. So, we are very much opposed to a garden apartment. If you want to build affordable housing, build some $300,000 homes. Don't build $800,000 homes. Put smaller homes on smaller properties, and have people who have more vested interest in staying in the town, and not just moving in and leaving after, I'm sorry, and passing through. That's about it. Thanks.
All right. Just go right around the room on this side here, and whoever wants to come up there and speak, they can. Just give your name and address, and if you, if you know where you're located in, on the map, you can kind of point it out there for the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Matt Moon, M-O-O-N. I live at 4 Crusader Lane in Nescotet. I'd like to start with two questions. The first is, I understand that outside of the yellow box, there's going to be residential building?
Yes.
Correct. Will there be access to the residential area from...
Yeah, if you'd like.
Will there be access to the residential area from inside the garden apartments?
Absolutely not. I don't need, I don't need the map to answer that, no.
Okay, so the only access to and from the garden apartments will be on Lake Avenue?
Yeah, if I may.
Can I turn it off for a second?
So everyone can see, this is Lake, this is one, this is the other. There's nothing...
Can you tell me where the water district is on that map? The one you just held up? Just reference me where the water district is.
Sir, you're, you're going to have a chance there...
It's just going to take more time. He just doesn't, two seconds, I have my question here.
You're going to have a chance there to speak there when everybody has had their turn, all right? But if you go back and forth, we're going to get nothing done.
Could I answer your question?
Oh, yes. My second question is, I understand that you said that you have the, the tax rolls submitted. Can you give us a rough idea of what per unit the taxes will be?
Yes. According to the assessor, according to the assessor's letter, which I have right here, each, the entire complex will generate $166,000.
And per year, per unit?
Per year, no, per year.
And per unit?
Twenty-five-eleven, plus or minus.
Twenty-five-hundred.
That's, that's what it says, yep.
Okay.
A year?
A year.
A year.
So people didn't hear what you said.
Absolutely. Give me a second. Just want to make sure I'm getting it right. An approximate tax liability of $166,000, or, which translates to $2,511 per unit, according to the Smithtown Town Assessor. I have the letter if you'd like it.
So, so in other words, I'm paying $13,005 to live in Nescotet, and these guys can come in for $2,500?
Yeah.
The property... Did you want to answer? If we compare apples and apples, I, I don't know the size of your property, but you're, you're taking one unit off of an entire development. The whole project size, as I, as I did say, was $166,000. I don't know the size of your home, but I'm sure it's significantly bigger than the apartment.
That doesn't negate the fact that I'm paying a substantial amount of money in order to live in this particular neighborhood, and you're making it attractive for someone who can only afford $2,500 a year to move into the same neighborhood. Why would I want to pay $13,000 to live next to somebody who's paying $20, $2,500?
And why hide the access to the new homes? I want to know that, too.
Please, okay?
Or in any case...
You'll all have a chance to come back with anything you want to say, so that we keep there, the thing going there, and he's able there to answer the question, okay?
Based on that, and based on the fact that these other people have mentioned that we moved out here to single-family neighborhoods, I want to be on the record that I oppose the project.
Thank you.
My name is Edward Gary. I reside at 22 Lancaster Avenue.
Yeah, it's Rudy, right there. That's why I express my clear opposition to the proposed zoning changes requested by Storybook Homes. The proposed single-bedroom garden apartments to be built would be located right in the center of a large residential section of Nescotet. I apologize, but these statements are pre-prepared. This would be completely out of character and does not conform to an area that's filled primarily with single-family homes. The complex would be disruptive to our neighborhood and poses a significant threat to the fabric of our community, not to mention the negative impact on our already depressed property values. In other words, this would produce an undesirable change to the neighborhood. This is, is a substantial request that has the potential to change the community and Nescotet as a whole. The purpose of this hearing is to protect the welfare, health, safety, and morals of the community, and prevent depreciation of the adjoining properties and lessen traffic congestion. This proposal does none of that. Judging by the negative public response to this request, requested zone change and its intended purpose, obviously something is wrong with the proposal. There are concerns about not only the impact of property values, but also the proximity to Tacktown Elementary School. The original R-15-zoned, single-family homes are not only in the character with the rest of the neighborhood, but will also add to the value of our homes and provide a much more stable residential environment and enhance the community versus single-bedroom apartments. Nescotet's been making a lot of positive progress in recent years. I grew up in Nescotet, moved to the other side of Smithtown for a while, then moved back to Nescotet to buy a house because I thought it was a nice place to live. I, along with many of my immediate neighbors, have invested significant time and money into our homes to make it an even nicer place. The improvements along Smithtown, along the Smithtown Boulevard corridor have also been welcomed with open arms, and the, and the library with the adjoining park, some gazebo concerts, and sprinkler park for the kids make it even better. The proposed zone change and garden apartments do not add value to Nescotet, and threatens the community with what appears to be a money grab by a local business. We're not objecting to the original plan. It's the new plan that everyone is worried about. This is a bait and switch, and Storybook Homes should not be granted permission to change the rules of the game. I find, I find it ironic that the people who developed a good portion of Nescotet over the years are now the ones who are intent on destroying it. Please don't let them destroy Nescotet. Plus, I, I want to add another point about, you know, they're going to keep the children out of, out of the schools because it's going to be married couples with no children. That's, that's totally looking through rose-colored glasses. That's the ideal situation, yeah. It's, it's great that married couples, you know, young married couples are going to move in. That sounds great, but the reality of the situation is, that's not what we're going to get, okay? And, and, you know, as was stated earlier, you, you're inviting a transient element into the neighborhood. We've seen some, with some of these apartments draw, and we're looking at, I mean, I'm going to go extreme here, you, you can get the potential for, for a drug den here, and, and, if not worse, with, with the transient element. Back in the day, when I used to be a delivery boy, I used to deliver to some of these garden apartments in the area, I know what goes on in these apartments. We don't need this right smack there in the middle of our, our neighborhood. And that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is John Rorick. I live at 13 Pearson Street. Last name's R-O-R-I-C-K, and I live right next to the yellow line, so it's not much of a buffer for me. Smack against it. I'm here, obviously, to voice my opposition to Storybook Homes' proposal. I think a lot of the points actually were very clearly made by Jim earlier on, and I appreciate that. I just want to emphasize a few things and add a couple of other points to the discussion. This, this proposal fails on its face. It's not in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, so it really ends there. And the beauty of this proposal is you actually have no more work to do. You've already properly zoned it. The developer bought it under the proper zoning. If anything, the developer agrees with us. The only thing that has changed in this time is there has been a recession, and this person is looking to rezone it and turn it into, as my neighbor mentioned, an annuity. These are the facts. I understand that he is the patron saint of young working professionals, and I like that spin. It's wonderful. But the fact of the matter is, this is, for him, a business opportunity. So there's a few other points I do want to emphasize as well. We talked a little about the cars. Ninety-nine parking lots, and parking spaces, by the way, is not going to be enough. We are a driving community. Everyone drives here. Additionally, that's going to further congest Lake Avenue to the detriment of a firehouse entrance, people turning off, off of residential blocks on Gaynor, Pearson, Wilson, Olson's Nursery. This is not necessary. Additionally, it's going to attract, as has been mentioned, a transient population. This is a, this is a community rooted in families. That's what you have here tonight, families. We were drawn to the area for that. It supports our home values because we draw in a nice, family community. We talked a little about the schools, that there's going to be no impact. Of course, in the view of the developer, there's going to be no impact. But what we're going to see at the schools is the accordion effect every single year of who do we have showing up, and who do we have leaving? Because it's going to be a year-by-year leased community. It's an apartment. It's rentals. People come and go. And that's going to have an accordion, whether it be up or down, on class sizes and stability. And that's not good, good for the community, and that's not good for the school district. One other just point to make is, the planning board, again, has actually had, I'm sorry, one more point to make is, I, I moved here to the town of Smithtown from the town of Brookhaven. I moved to the town of Smithtown because you don't do things like this here. You don't change proper zoning. And again, the developer knows this, bought the parcel of land correctly under the correct zoning. It is smack dab in the middle of single-family residential homes. The discussion really should end there. Thank you very much for your time.
Anybody else in this, thank you. You can take that mic out if you want, and hold it.
Oh, that's okay. My name is Maria Palmentieri, P-A-L-M-I-N-T-E-R-I, and I live at 20 Charlemagne Drive in Nescotet. I think that you all here need to consider a number of things, primarily the impact on the school system. We already live in a community with an overburdened, underfunded school district, and we know that in order to keep the quality of education that we've become accustomed to, they're going to come to us on the school board votes, okay? And on the tax votes, and these things directly impact us. We know that a transient population, if you've done your homework, sir, directly impacts the quality of education that our children receive. And again, I think we're all saying the same thing. I moved to this community not for affordable housing. I pay in excess of $12,000 a year in taxes. Frankly, I'm looking for neighbors with the same socioeconomic background that I have, neighbors who are willing to take care of their homes and have, keep their roots in this community. In addition to that, the traffic is a major issue. I have to tell you, we have that lovely Armory over there on Smithtown Boulevard. My kids are not allowed to ride their bicycles or walk there. They are not allowed on Lake Avenue or to cross Smithtown Boulevard, ever. Those roads are overburdened as it is. What we need is less cars on those roads, so that the community members can enjoy what is already there in place for us. We need less cars on Lake Avenue and on Smithtown Boulevard, not more. I think you need to look at that. Our kids take their lives in their hands if they ride their bicycles on Lake Avenue and forget Smithtown Boulevard. Every morning I drive to work, and I should go directly down Old Nichols Road to get to the expressway. You can't get anywhere near there. I take Terry Road all the way down to 111 to get on the expressway there. You cannot travel those roads during rush hour. So again, I think this board here really needs to consider the impact on the school system and the impact on the community as a whole. Please, consider those options there. Look at the traffic patterns. More people in an apartment complex is not what we need there. And sir, if you're so concerned about low-income housing and, and affordable housing, you should be advocating for lower taxes for this community here. Thank you.
Anybody else on this side?
Good evening. My name is Ray Loefreese, L-O-F-R-E-S-E, and I reside at 29 Heritage Place South. I adamantly oppose this proposal. When I moved out to Smithtown 30 years ago, my parents, I came out here for a reason, to get away from Nassau County. Nassau County was very overburdened with a lot of businesses and a lot of garden apartments that were coming into our area. My, my parents had the foresight to move out here. And coming out here, when my wife and I got married, we bought a house in Nescotet because we knew we were going to raise a family here. This is a community of families. This does not belong where it's proposed to go, at all. We all are here tonight because we feel very strongly about it. We are all on softball teams together. We go to dance together. We are a community, and we adamantly oppose this. So I ask you, please reject this proposal. Thank you.
My name is Michael Wichendahl, spelled W-I-C-H-T-E-N-D-A-H-L, and I reside at 336 Lake Avenue South. Before I begin, I just want to ask one question about the proposed plan. It says septic treatment area, but there are no buildings in the area that's labeled as the septic treatment area. So I just want to understand how a 66-unit development can be built without any sort of septic treatment plant?
We can answer that.
Yeah, I'm sure. This particular application generates so many gallons, it can be handled with what's called a chromaglass denitrification system, and it doesn't require a building structure to denitrate.
Okay, great. Thank you. I think the crowd, the crowd wanted to know, what does that actually mean to the lead person?
Well, in other words, it doesn't need a, a building or a facility to do the job because the amount of gallons of septic isn't that great. It's under 15,000 gallons.
Is this a, is this a county requirement?
Yes. It's a Suffolk County Health Department requirement, and it is achievable system for this size project.
Okay, my next question's going to be, this is all fine and good, this is the five acres or so, plus or minus, that the builder wants to presently change the zoning on, capitalize on his business opportunity. He's tried since 2005 with all of his renewals on the other application because, as everyone else is saying, we have a failed housing market. How do we know after this is built that the rest of the area won't undergo similar zoning change, possibly require a sewage treatment plant? Furthermore, I mean, it was definitely a great presentation. He's paid a lot of money to have these gentlemen come up here and speak on his behalf tonight. We heard all about how our community needs this, we need to attract young people, even if it's lipstick on a pig, and we do get some elderly people. That's all fine and great. My other question is, this gentleman has another parcel of property on Smithtown Boulevard that something like this could be put on, and he's not doing it there. It doesn't seem right. There's something wrong with this. I'm here tonight to voice my opposition to this plan. Thank you.
Hi, Nick Orianna, 27, Heritage Place South. A-U-R-I-A-N-A. I don't have much to say as far as pretty much everybody here hit the same points, but I just want to say, I'm only here four years, came from Brooklyn. Reason why I left Brooklyn was for things like this. And now, there is no way I would have come here had I known that something like this was going. So I just want to go on the record to say that I oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Roxanne Colareta, C-O-L-L-A-R-E-T-A.
Can you get just a little bit closer to the mic, please?
Did you get it? C-O-L-L-A-R-E-T-A. I grew up in Comac. As a young person, I moved away because I couldn't afford to be here, but when it was time to have my family, I wanted to move home to suburbia. I wanted my children to have a wonderful place to live, as I did, and this has been a wonderful community. It's very family. We all know each other. And I just want to state that I am against this, and I do have a question for you. We are all against this. Do you want each of us to get up here and say we're against it? Do you want to send papers around? How do you want us to handle this? We do not want this, all of us. We don't want this.
You'll all have an opportunity. If everybody wants to speak, everybody can speak. But I take your word for it that everybody here, so far, has been opposed to it, okay?
My name is Kenneth Walsh, W-A-L-S-H, 39 Roosevelt Avenue. I just want to say I'm opposed to this. It's residential. Leave it residential. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. Rich Harinski, H-A-R-I-N-S-K-Y. I reside at 43 Roosevelt Avenue in Nessconset, which is the southeast corner of the undeveloped land. I've only moved here since September. We lived in Kings Park. I have three young kids, two of whom are at school age, that go to Tacon. I am concerned about the garden apartment with the transient population, what kind of people will be there, be in the community, and my kids, who are they going to interact with? We love Nessconset. It is a family-oriented place. Everyone is fantastic since we moved here. We picked our house for the neighborhood. It's a dead-end street. It's really quiet. It's a beautiful area. At night, it's dark. You can see the stars. You know, in a lot of towns, you can't get that. You start building and start developing, you kind of lose that kind of rural atmosphere, the kind of suburb nature of the place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Lawless, 44, Roosevelt Avenue, Nessconset. I live on the, my property adjoins the water authority, so I'm right in the, I'm right, I guess, within 1,000 feet from the edge of the proposed property. I would like the developers to describe the subsequent residential development and where the access points would be for that. My specific concern is Roosevelt Avenue is a very narrow street. School buses can't get up it. I understand that it's going to be a cul-de-sac when they do develop, so I'd like to get that stipulated on the record, that Roosevelt will remain a dead end and a cul-de-sac.
Is this the, is this there the plan for the 1086 application?
Yes, it is. It's the overall subdivision map. But it's a portion, this is a portion of that.
But this plan has already been preliminary approval, okay? So that all they're going to do now is a final approval. So that you locate your place there, and they can tell you where.
So is there a stipulation that there'll be no subsequent rezoning for the remaining 47 houses?
Oh, no. This application there is already, an application has already been approved for that 1086 application.
Well, what would preclude them for just like these five acres for asking for a rezoning change?
That's a different part of the property.
This particular piece was always represented, it's called Section 5. Section 5 is the subject of the change of zone. The other portion of the overall map is being developed as single-family residential. Right now is approved in that fashion, and this particular piece on Lake Avenue wasn't represented subdivided into single-family homes because it was split-zoned.
You understand what he's saying about a split zone?
No.
In other words, there is, part of that application there has business, has it, and the other part had residential, and that's what they call a split zone, okay?
That's this application that we're hearing.
It's the application that we're hearing right now, okay?
So the first question is, what is to stop the other one from changing?
Well, if somebody wants to change zone on that property, like any other property, they have to go through the procedure that somebody would go through, which is this. But listen, let's not go with all the questions. That application, the 1086 application, has already had preliminary approval. The only way that that can change is if there's a request for a change of zone. That's the only way it can be done. All right, but that's not the question here tonight. The question here tonight is the zoning application there for that Section 5 that he's referring to. That's all we're handling here tonight. Yes, I understand, I understand your suspicion, but... Listen, would you, wait a minute.
Wait a minute.
Wait a minute. I can't answer questions back and forth in here. You're going to have plenty of time to come up to the mic and put that question when you come up to the mic, but let's keep it so that everybody has a comment for what they want, and then if you want to go back over it again, we can. But let's do it one at a time so everybody can get a chance to listen, okay? Now, in this section over here, is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Just one more thing relative to the traffic patterns. When we exit Roosevelt onto Smithtown Boulevard, we have Starbucks on our left and 7-Eleven on our right. We can wait up to like five to 10 minutes at times during rush hour to make a left towards Nichols Road. So the additional traffic on Smithtown Boulevard is just going to be, is just going to make a problem worse moving into the future. Thank you.
My name is Dawn Villacci, V-I-L-L-A-C-C-I, for Guinevere Lane in Nessconset. I do not live very close to this parcel, but I do travel the roads of Nessconset very often, and they are extremely overcrowded all the time. Nichols Road, the traffic goes all the way back past Midwood Avenue, Lake Avenue, it's the same thing on the other side. Smithtown Boulevard is a gridlock, especially on rush hour hours, like somebody already mentioned. I just can't even imagine adding that many more cars into that traffic pattern without doing something with the roads as well. And also, the gentleman talked about no impact on the schools and studies that have been done. I probably could find studies that do say that there would be impact on the schools, and somebody else already mentioned that as well, as far as the transient population goes. So I'm very opposed to it, even though I'm not directly in the area, and there are many, many others who are very opposed to it, who are not here tonight because they didn't get the notification, and by the time it was sent out and got around, it was just too late. People are busy. It's the last week of school, and there's a lot going on. So there are many, many, many more people in our community who are opposed to this that are not here this evening.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Anita Dowd Newfeld, and I live at 30 Brooks Avenue in Nessconset. And I just wanted to say I'm very much opposed to it. The traffic on Lake Avenue and Smithtown Boulevard is really horrendous. It takes me sometimes even five minutes to get out of my own driveway because I'm in the corner of Pearson and Brooks, and we got a lot of illegal renters on our block too. So it's very, very challenging to get out, and I live near all these people here, and they will tell you how the characteristic of the neighborhood has already changed, especially with the 7-Eleven going in, and we got the beer runs going on Friday and Saturday night. The police are going down the block all the time, the fire department's on, and to add another entrance onto Lake Avenue right by us would really change the characteristic of the neighborhood, so. Just wanted to let you know I'm very much opposed to it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Lorraine K-U-C-Z-W-A-J. I live at 112 Mayfair Road, which is about a mile, mile and a half away from this area. So it doesn't directly impact my house, but it does. I, my best friend lives over there, so it does hurt. But anyway, I wrote a couple of notes down. I wanted to know of what percentage of the apartments that are in Smithtown are actually located in Nessconset? Because we have two complexes down the block from my house on Mayfair Road. We have one at the corner that's about seven units, and then we have one right around the corner on Smithtown Boulevard that I don't have a clue how many it is, okay? So what percentage of all those apartments you were talking about are in actually Nessconset as opposed to just part of Smithtown?
Maybe the planning director can give you the numbers. You can't.
Your mic's not on.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. We don't, I didn't have a breakdown of that, but I could tell you that there are approximately 1,600 apartment units in the town of Smithtown.
Okay, and I would guarantee that a percentage of them, a larger percentage is in Nessconset than in St. James, head of the harbor, Nessacwag, or any other development in Smithtown. And that is because we are considered a stepchild.
The lowest percentage would be in St. James, followed by Kings Park and Smithtown probably, and Hopg have the highest concentrations.
Okay, well, Hopg's not part of us, really. I mean, that little tiny section of Hopg that's Smithtown is really, I mean, come on. Are you kidding?
Hopg is significant.
It's what, three blocks?
No. I'm sorry about your geography, but you're wrong about that.
Okay.
Hopg Industrial Park is all within the town of Smithtown.
How much of Hopg is part of Smithtown? What percentage of Hopg is part of Smithtown?
About 50% of Hopg is in the town of Smithtown.
50%?
Yes.
In Smithtown schools and Smithtown township? And they go to our beaches? And they go to our schools?
In the town of Smithtown, the portion, we have the entire tax base for the Hopg School District is located in the town of Smithtown. That's the Hopg, the entire Hopg Industrial Park is in the town of Smithtown. That's 1,800 acres.
Okay, so then why do we pay the highest taxes? Why do we pay so much higher than Hopg?
No, because your taxes, the taxes go to the Hopg School District, not to the Smithtown School District.
Oh, so I see. So they live in our neighborhood, they build in our neighborhood, but we give the money back to Hopg. That makes a lot of sense.
No, 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 no.
Hopg Industrial Park pays taxes that go to the Hopg School District.
But he says it's part of Smithtown.
Hopg is part of Smithtown.
So we don't get it.
Hopg is part of Iceland.
It's the hamlet of Hopg in the town of Smithtown, okay?
There are six school districts.
But it's on a school, the school district is all Hopg.
Just like parts of Nessconset are Satcham School Districts. I got it. I understand that. But what I'm saying is, he's saying it's part of Smithtown, it's Hopg, but it's part of Smithtown, yet we don't get any of the revenue for it.
That's correct. For the school, but you get the, we get the revenue for the...
Which is the percentage of our taxes.
Yes.
The highest percentage of our taxes. Okay, well, if you don't know that how many apartments are in Nessconset, we already have a lot, and most of our apartments are right there on Smithtown Boulevard area. The problem already is that Mayfair Road, which is the block I live on, and I have no clue on where it is on that map, I could try to find it if you'd like, but when I moved here 23 years ago, I know I look young, but I did, I moved here 23 years ago. When I got married, I had a horse farm on that block, okay? And the entire block wasn't there. We were told when I built my house, we had to have a half an acre because of the fact that there were cesspools. Now, all of a sudden, they're building 66 units, and they don't need any special cesspools or any buildings?
Oh, yes, they do. You heard the gentleman talk.
He said he didn't need a special building.
No, he has, he has to get a county health department-approved septic system there in order to develop that.
But it's not going to be a building. It's going to go, from what I understand, he said it did not have to be a building.
Maybe if I could clarify this for you. You're correct when you mentioned, if you build anywhere in the town of Smithtown, a single-family home, you need a half acre of land if you have a simple cesspool system.
Correct.
If you want to build higher than that in terms of density, okay, you have to change the technology on which you have a septic system. What they are, what the surveyor testified to is they're proposing with this application to build what is called a chromaglass system, which is not a septic system. It is an actively maintained system that removes, that they have to actively remove nitrates, which means that you are allowed by the health department regulations to have higher densities on this particular site. So that's how they're getting around the density rule with, that you just mentioned.
Again, how they're getting around the density rule.
Well, those are set by the Suffolk County Health Department.
Okay. I have a couple more a little here. I'd like to know, since I live on Mayfair, and it's now become a cut-through, and we all know it has, we can't even prevent the people from speeding down the block now. My children can't go in the front of the house without one of us being there. I've actually called the cops because people have stopped and cursed me out when I tell them to stop speeding on my block, okay? So how is this 66 units, which, by the way, 99 parking spots is no way going to be enough? Where are the visitors going to park? If you have 99 spots and you have 1.5 spots for every unit, that's not going to work.
Whatever the qualifications are for that application...
I understand. I understand what the paper says, and I understand reality. Reality and paper don't always mix. On paper, that looks beautiful. The house is really nice, really pretty, no problem at all. But now you're going to have 66 housing units, one bedroom, and we all know most of them are going to be two people living there, because I don't know many 22-year-olds that can afford $1,200 a month, okay? And save money to move into our neighborhood to buy a house? Are they kidding me? It took me three years of saving money, living with my in-laws, to buy in Nessconset, and that was 23 years ago. You really think people living in $1,200 a month is going to be able to afford to buy a house in Nessconset at any time in their lifetime? There's no way.
That's what we're here for. We're here...
Oh, no, I understand. You wanted to hear what we have to say.
Yes.
I'm telling you what I have to say. I have a problem with the fact they have 765 square feet, and they're paying $2,500 a year in taxes, okay? My house is a little less than two and a half times that size. I'm paying over $9,000. I know, it's a lot lower than most, sorry. I've grieved them several times, and I've done nothing to my little ranch house, okay? But my point is that it's not even two and a half times theirs, and yet, a little over two and a half times theirs, and yet I'm paying astronomically more taxes. I know I have a little bit more property than they do, but not for nothing, I'm paying for that property a lot more than they're paying for theirs. That's not acceptable. I want to know if, if this is approved, how are you going to have the traffic on the main roads and the side streets diverted so that I don't have to worry about my children walking down the block and being killed? The last time I was here, you guys wanted to put a bus depot where the armory is. You might have forgotten that, but I didn't, okay? You thought it was a great idea. Well, thank God that the Nessconset Tax Association made enough fighting so that that didn't happen, okay? And I love the armory now, it's beautiful, and I remember all the fighting we did for it. But are we going to have to do the same thing because of this? Because somebody, no offense to you, you look like a very nice man, and I'm sure you're just trying to make a living, but the problem is...
Please, please, just address your comments to us, okay?
Well, I wasn't being mean to him.
No, he's not there, he's the attorney for the African, okay?
He's a nice person, but the thing is that, exactly what other people are saying, this is not, the reason it was zoned one area is because they wanted to have some commercial because it's bi-zoned or whatever you call it, double-zoned.
Split zone. Split zone.
Whatever. Split by, whatever. If they wanted to put a small business up, like we have, like Joe's Pizza and the Boulevard If they wanted to put a small business up, like we have, like Joe's Pizza and the Boulevard Bagels, which we all love, but anyway, if they wanted to put that there, we would have no choice. We would have to let it go. But if you wanted to put a three-story commercial building there, you couldn't do it. So just because he bought this property, sorry, before the real estate went bad, and now he wants to change it so that he could still make a profit on it, that's not our fault. We didn't do anything to cause him to do this. We don't need any more apartments in Nescotin. Why don't we try putting it in the Head of the Harbor and see what happens there? It's no different. I want to check my list though. Because now I'm getting a little upset.
Just, just so that I can add to you, when I came here sixty-four years ago to Smithtown, and I've been a resident for sixty-four years, there was only 10,000 people in the whole town. So that all of this has happened as a result there of development. Now, there's an application before us for a change of a zone, but we don't make that change of zone. All we can do is listen to your arguments, make a decision whether the town board should hear it or not.
No, we understand that.
Okay?
We understand that.
Okay.
We got it. But the point is that...
We're not against you.
No, no, we don't think you are. But the point is that we have to make our point strong enough to you...
Yes, absolutely.
So that you can make our opinion known to the board, because obviously we can't talk to them.
Absolutely.
So therefore, we have to talk through you. So if we can make our opinion strong enough to you, so you know how we feel, then you can understand and take that same feeling and project it to the board. Because unless the board wants to come here and listen to all of us talk, there's no way they're going to know unless we tell you and you can project it to them.
Everything that you said tonight is on television and recorded here.
I would have put my hair better. I just came out of the pool. You should have told me I was going to be on television.
But nothing that you said is not going to be recorded. It's all on TV. All on TV.
I should have done my hair.
And you can watch it.
I came out of the pool. Okay.
And ma'am, ma'am, you will, no matter what happens here tonight, the applicant has to go before the town board, whether we recommend approval or denial. They have to go to the town board. And you all will have another opportunity to speak directly to the town board.
Will we have more notice this time?
You'll have, the notice is required by law.
Yes.
Again, if the Tax Association didn't tell us, we wouldn't know.
Well, you'll have, the point is you'll have another opportunity to speak directly to the town board.
The procedure is that it comes before the planning board, and we basically tell the town board from a planning perspective, is it a good idea or is it a bad idea to change zone on this property? That's what this process is. But ultimately, the decision to change the zoning, yes or no, is the town board's, and there will be another hearing that you all can go to and tell them how you feel.
Okay. I have two more questions.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry to take up everybody's time. The lights, you said that they have to have a certain amount of lighting and they're going to be down-flected, not you. Said that there's going to be a certain amount of lights and they have to be down-flected as to not disturb the neighbors around them.
Everything, everything that's going to be done to that property, if it gets that way...
No, no.
The planning director will tell them exactly what kind of lights, and you want down-reflecting lights?
No.
That's what he's...
I don't want any of the lights.
You don't want any lights?
I don't want them there.
Okay.
But, you know, my point being is, if the lights are not sufficient enough, then it's not going to be a safe area for people to be walking in at night. The other issue is if it's too lit up, then that man's not going to be able to watch the stars with his children, and that's not fair. He moved in this neighborhood so he could do that. So he can go out in his backyard, and he can listen to the chirping of the birds and all that stuff. That's why we're here. That's why we care. It's not just about making money. It's about giving our children a better life by being out in an area that has a better life. We're already in trouble with all the trouble we had with our schools already, so let's just add to the trouble by making Nescotin worse than it was to begin with. Okay, one more question. So is there any guarantee that that other parcel, this is section five, I got it, section five is what we're asking to change, is there any guarantee that the next section, whatever that may be?
That's it, you, you've got it right there.
Whatever section that might be, I'm not sure. Oh, this is section five.
Yes.
So this whole section here...
Does all have a preliminary map on it already.
Okay, I got that. We showed it this.
No, that, no, that didn't have it, that didn't have it.
The other parcel has already been, the map's been approved for, was it forty-seven or forty-eight single-family homes?
That we all know aren't going to be built now because of the fact that the eight-hundred-thousand-dollar homes aren't going to go in when they'll be fine.
But that's, that's your opinion, and all we can do is take your opinion, okay?
But is there any guarantee this isn't going to be changed as well, the apartments?
I don't know, because there, there's an application that's already had preliminary approval before this board in 2005. And he's renewed it, he's renewed it, we renewed it again tonight to continue to the final application. That's where he's going up to this point.
Right. Does he have the right, does he have the right to stop and start over again and try to change the zone on that? He's got the right to do that. People have the right to change zone on their property. But he's already along the process, pretty far along in the process, to having the single-family homes built there.
They have the right to attempt it, doesn't mean they'll be successful, so...
So there is no guarantee of that?
You can't stop them from attempting.
He has the right to make the application.
So even if we, God forbid, even if that was to go to apartments, I know, it's got to go through the whole process, there's still no guarantee that all of that property wouldn't be asked not to go to apartments?
One has nothing to do with the other.
Well, it doesn't align.
No, but I mean as far as the right of the person to make the application.
But no, I'm not asking you, he can do whatever he wants for applications, but I'm asking you is to guarantee us that they're not going to be able to pass that.
We can't make you that guarantee.
We can't make that guarantee.
Listen, what I told you a few minutes ago, I came here sixty-four years ago. On Gibbs Pond Road I lived, there was not a soul from one end to the other. So that the town has developed as a result of people making an application...
But they're single-family homes.
Not all of them. Not all of them.
No, you're right, because the two apartment complexes are right down the block from me.
Right. There, there's apartment, there's, there's, all of these changes zones have happened through the years, and it's not a question there where we'll do it, it's the town board will do it if they want to do it.
We're not blaming you.
You what?
We're not blaming you.
No, I know you're not blaming me.
But you keep trying to defend yourself.
But you...
We're not blaming you.
I'm not to blame for it there.
We have to defend ourselves in every way we know how. This is our survival. You are the first defense we have. So in order for us to get to the point where we don't have to fight the next battle, we're trying to prevent you from going and approving it to the board, what you would say, we do approve it. We think it's a good idea.
We just recommend.
Right, okay, recommend, I'm sorry. We're trying to prevent you from recommending it to the board, okay? We want you to not recommend it to the board. So the first thing we can do is explain to you our side.
That's right.
You asked us if we wanted to speak, I came up here to speak. You keep telling me you don't make the decision. I got it, I'm an educated woman, believe me. I understand the process. I've got it the first time you said it. Telling me fifteen times is not going to make it any different. But you have to understand, this is our community. This is where we live, where my children are growing up. You can't guarantee me a stop sign on my block, and yet you want me to approve sixty-six more units to go out on Lake Avenue, come down Smithtown Boulevard, and go down Mayfair Road so they can kill my children? Is that what it's going to take so that you stop this guarded development?
I told you that...
I know, it's not you. But you make your recommendations.
Excuse me, ma'am, can you just bring it down a little bit?
I got a little heated.
And stay on point.
But that is the point. The traffic is the point. We were told that when they develop things, it's not going to impact the traffic. We were told that when they did the library, it wasn't going to impact the traffic. I love the library, we walk to it all the time. My children can't walk by themselves because everybody's speeding down the block. Don't tell me that it didn't impact the traffic, okay? It did. The traffic on Smithtown Boulevard has been impacted by the armory tenfold, okay? So that's just something that's open from nine to nine, Monday through Sunday now it's open because of the other one being closed. So you think that a twenty-four, sixty-six unit is not going to affect our traffic with one, two ways out, two ways in and one way out on Lake Avenue? Where are all those cars going? Some are going to 347. Okay, it's already backed up almost to West Lane from 347 in the morning now. So how much further are we going to back that up? So let's go down to Smithtown Boulevard. Okay, you can't get down to Smithtown Boulevard in the evening. So let's go down Mayfair, or let's go down Southern, or let's go down Lake. But it is impacting us. And they sit there and they say they're going to do a traffic study. They obviously don't tell us what the traffic studies are, because I can tell you by living there how much the traffic has increased in the twenty years I'm there. I can imagine what it's like in sixty-four years. We actually have paved roads now, I know, they were, are, my brother-in-law lived out here, I know, he told me all about it. But it's, that's progress. I understand progress. This is in progress.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Just for the board's identification, we do have the traffic study, I do have the traffic engineer available if you'd like to hear from him.
No, let's finish up, let's finish up there the people that want to make a comment. All right, is there anybody else who would like to make a comment over here?
Hi, my name's Rob Kozick, I live on 25 Lancaster Avenue. Kozick, K-O-Z-I-K. I have a question about the drainage directed at this gentleman and yourself. You said the land is flat, but from my viewpoint of my house, I'm looking up at the road. And when I stand on Smithtown Boulevard, I can see the road about ten feet above my head, where is all the water going to go when it's developed? Since the woods, you know, absorb everything? Let me answer that for you.
Part of the overall subdivision application is an onsite recharge basin that handles the rainwater coefficients for the entire property. It's located right here, I'll point it on the map.
Yeah, at the termination of Roosevelt.
That would be a song? Yes, that. Later this time.
That's pretty much it. Everybody else covered the traffic issue.
Anybody else on this side? Okay.
John Reese, 205 Gibbs Pond Road. John Reese, 205 Gibbs Pond Road. I'm not anywhere near over here. You were saying Gibbs Pond Road. My parents built the house on Gibbs Pond Road, seventy-seven. They were told on Gibbs Pond Road there was going to be a dead-end street because there's a park there, there's a pond there. That never happened. That street, I used to literally play on that street. I used to play in these woods that are over here that they want to build over there. As you were saying, but they have a traffic, traffic is horrendous in this area, horrendous. The fumes and the cars driving on the road are insane. So you're going to do sixty-six housing units over here in this area, again, I pay almost $14,000 a year in taxes to live in this area. It's insane. $2,500 for this, and you're going to create so many more people in this area. It's going to be a dead trap. God forbid something happens on my street, I'm telling you right now, I will sue this whole town, because it is insane the way it's allowed to happen in this community. Nescotin is a great place to live. I moved back here, my children live here, but it's insane the way Nescotin's being treated with all this to be garbage. It doesn't belong here. This is a community of families. Thank you.
Anybody else on this side? Okay, this gentleman here.
Good evening. My name's Christopher D'Antonio. I reside at Ada Powell Lane, Hopg, New York. Nescotin's smaller, littler cousin. We are very much a part of the town of Smithtown, half of us, we do belong. I just wanted to let you know that my parents moved here about twenty years ago. We settled, and at the time they purchased their house, it was roughly $190,000, and that was back in 1991. All right? They have since done probably what many of you have done, and that is they've built it into their castle. It is glorious, it is wonderful. It is also worth probably now somewhere in the ballpark of $450,000 to $500,000, okay? This is by no means an entry or starter or even a successive home for anyone in my, in my generation, and it probably won't be for quite a while into my future or even in my future. All right? And it's reflective of the fact that many homes experience illegal conversions to apartments to accommodate either an elderly relative or a person such as myself, whereas a parent's trying to give their child a leg up, have some independence, and actually live in their own, you know, living space, but still be nearby and benefit from affordability. All right? So while I, I do respect all this, there is a dire need for this sort of housing overall, especially for people of my generation. And I apologize, I'm one of the few representatives left because I want to stay here, I believe this is a wonderful and great place, and I don't know where the stigma came from that a twenty, that a twenty-two to forty-year-old was a drug user or a transient or someone who didn't contribute to their community. I love this community. I, I try to contribute to it all the time. I would take care of it as though it, you know, were as precious to me as the home that, you know, I might own someday, hopefully here, all right? Although the prices may not allow for it.
Sir, you live, you live in Hopg, you said?
I do live in Hopg.
May I ask just how you made aware of this meeting?
I actually was made aware of it via the Patch website, because that actually relayed, and I was actually a kind commenter who actually provided that this petition was before the board tonight, otherwise I would not have known that this was going on. I imagine that many people in my age group are working right now, whether Starbucks or McDonald's or whatever job they could find, so it's, it's probably not in their time schedule as well. So I'm one of the few representatives who has a job, I'm one of the young working professionals that works nine to five, fortunately, and I was able to make it tonight. And as far as the traffic issues go, I'd just like to comment toward that. What sort of community are we living in if we're already experiencing these, these fumes that some of you have addressed previously, or this, this traffic congestion that we have already? Like, I think the, a community where people can walk and children can play freely and we can, you know, maybe everybody can take a bike out once in a while and enjoy their community and experience it. You speak of how wonderful and how beautiful it is, and it is wonderful and beautiful. But why is it we're all in our cars, traveling all over the place? Why aren't we enjoying this community? Smithtown Boulevard is Main Street for Nescotin, all right? This sort of development, while it may be, you know, have its issues, is going to provide hopefully people like myself who are going to feel quite well with walking down Smithtown hopefully people like myself who are going to feel quite well with walking down Smithtown Boulevard or biking down or enjoying the restaurants or experiencing the community as it is, all right? So I'll leave it at that and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, thank you.
Kenneth Walsh, 39 Roosevelt Avenue in Wisconsin. My comment to him is, or to the audiences, you have to own a piece of property to understand how much something like this impacts values, okay? I do appreciate that young people do need a place to live, but on my end, at my age, I'm looking at my house value also. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go to this side now. Anybody that wants to talk, come on up. Oops, one at a time here. Let that lady go first or you can go second.
Hi, Teresa Noto, N-O-T-O, 5 South Court, Wisconsin. Okay, so I have a few things to say and I'll be very brief, and I appreciate you guys taking the time and everybody here to spend these hours to, to discuss this, obviously we're very passionate about it, that's what this community is about. I want to go on record saying that I'm here to oppose this plan. And I say that on behalf of myself and on the hundreds of people that are here, at least 100, in the room and in the back and in the hallway and all of those that couldn't make it, I found out less than a week ago, on the baseball field actually. I live on South Court, which is a little north, so I don't actually touch this, but this touches all of us. So I'm asking you guys to do the right thing and listen to what everyone said because they're all right from the traffic to the transients. My children go to Tacan, you know, this is going to affect all of us. And I didn't move into this community to be part of this garden apartment rental community. And I can appreciate these people are going to want a place to live and that's great. And when they grab their blanket and they come to the summer concert, I know their $2,500 in taxes is going to be, woo-hoo! Mine is $13,000, so, you know, we've all, we're all kind of in the same boat. And like I said, I, you know, I, I can appreciate you hearing us, I want to go on record opposing it. If there's another meeting, and I hope that there's not, I don't know, and I guess this is a question for you guys, can we get a petition for those that can't be here because there are a lot of people, a lot?
Absolutely, anybody that wants to carry a petition there and, and get it together, go ahead.
Okay.
Absolutely, that's very important information.
How would I submit that?
Well, I don't know, somebody, one of these, one of the agent, one of these associations here and they could probably there get people there, Internet Today and everything else there, you could be able to get somebody there to do it.
Okay, because I-
There's going to be another hearing in front of the town board, no matter what happens here tonight. So you all can go back before them, if you want to gather a petition between now and then, that's up to you, and you can submit it to them.
Please do the right thing, guys.
And not only that, but we're going, we're going to have, before we even make a decision, we're going to do an onsite. We're going to go look at the property and take all of your comments and, and be aware of what you're interested in and where, and why, before we even make a decision here, okay?
Okay, I just want to clarify one thing for that guy. He talked about, you know, they'll be able to walk and they can walk down to Smithtown Boulevard and they can do all this walking and it's going to be great. There's no supermarket, this guy, anywhere near walking distance, so if they want to walk to a pizzeria, these poor innocent low-income families to have dinner every night, I get it, but there's not, you can't walk to a store to buy clothes or walk to a shoe store or walk to anywhere that these low-income people may want to walk to as part of their community. So we are a thriving community, that's what this is about, we don't need more cars. Thank you.
You're welcome. Can you just wait one minute, sir, then while this lady here, she was, she was just in, and you can come on up, okay?
Barbara Vogel, V-O-G-E-L-L, I live at 3 Maiden Lane in this concert. I'd just like to know, is this Section 8 housing or is part of it going to be provided to Section 8 participants?
I didn't hear the question clearly.
It's Section 8 housing.
Oh, no, this is not Section 8 housing.
It's not?
No, no.
Okay, and what determines your recommendation to the board? How do you assess it? How do you make that determination? I'm not, if, if, a majority of the people here are opposed to it, how do you determine what to present to the board and what your recommendations would be?
We decide whether this application from a planning perspective is good or not. And we make a recommendation to the town board that we think it should be approved or it should not be approved. But whatever we do, the town board can do the opposite. If we recommend that it be denied, they could still approve it, if we recommend that it be approved, they could still deny it. Whether we think from a planning, from a, from a planning perspective, that whether it's a good application that should be granted.
If, if you're asking whether your opinions here tonight hold any influence or sway, absolutely.
That's one piece of the, of the puzzle.
That we take into consideration. And we take the applicant's information into consideration and we take what the planning board, uh, planning department has to say into consideration.
And then we go out and look at it and look at the surrounding areas and get the, get, see for ourselves how it would fit, what they want to put, would it fit, would it not fit? Oh, yes, we're going to do an onsite. In fact, they're-
I live on Gibbs Pond Road.
We're going to do an onsite and look at this here. I definitely want to see there the, where the Water Authority property is, so that this is something there that we do on a regular basis, is after we've had a hearing, we do an onsite. And then there we consider all of the information from the hearing and we can, as Jim says there, we could make a recommendation to the town board and they would go against us. Or we could say to the town board, we don't want this to happen, and they could say, well, we do want it to happen, so that the town board is going to make the final decision.
Ma'am, 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 we have to go in an order here, if you want to come up to the bike after she's done and come up and speak and give your name.
Let's, let's go in some order here, we can stay on this thing, so that, and stay in that method there, so that we can get done with all of the initial questions.
I would just hope that when you present your proposal to the board, that if it were in your backyard, would you want it? That's all I ask.
I understand, I understand.
Good evening, Rich Rodriguez, 20 Heritage Place South. Basically, we almost lost buzzing for most of our kids or a good amount of our kids this year. We're losing at least one of our schools next year. Obviously, we cannot afford to bring potentially what, 100 more kids at least into-
Zero, you didn't listen to me, I said zero.
Please, please direct the questions here and then we'll get an answer for you.
Potentially 1.2 kids per.
Yes.
Therefore-
That's not what I said, sir.
Potentially.
No, that's not what I said, sir.
Uh, I'm addressing the board.
Okay, that's a way to do it, then we don't get into the-
Also, not only that, we cannot afford it, it's as simple as that. If, if you look where it's located, Gaynor, which is the access right to Great Hollow, it's just north of it, maybe what, not even a quarter mile? We almost lost the buzzing, the kids were going to walk right through that area to get to school, so we're adding yet more traffic there. And the interest to, you know, to the extra traffic is probably potentially going to be dangerous for them if we do lose the buzzing because it's, the money's just not there. And it's going to cost us that much more. As far as stigma, it's not even that, we paid what we pay to be here in this, in this community. And we have lost, I would say probably 15, 20% of the value of our homes, I would say probably through the past three to four, five years. This is not going to add to the value of our homes. If it, if it was kept the way it was meant to be, residential, one-family homes, it may equate and stay the same, but more than likely, the value of our, of our homes is going to go down, let's say 5%, 10%. I'm not willing to do that. I mean, this, we have spent most of our lives saving just to come to this neighborhood for all the other reasons that all these other people have, have stated already. I mean, stigma, think about, I, I hate to mention a, an area, but Union Avenue in Bay Shore, look at those garden apartments. Think about it, I mean, I wouldn't want to live anywhere around that area, just, just drive by and you'll see what I'm talking about. I mean, it's just, doesn't keep to the character that we actually decided to move out this way for, and, you know, work as hard as we have just to maintain that.